All right, I consent. And here we go. And good afternoon. I'm going to go ahead and call this session of the City of Seidro Woolley Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is January 12th, 2022, still getting used to saying that. At 3:00 PM, we have one item on the agenda today. This is number LP 2021067, involving a request for approval of a preliminary plat known as the Bucko Estates that would allow for the subdivision of a 19.6 acre property into 64 residential lots, including 60 single-family lots and four duplex lots, along with other associated ordinances and improvements at 503 and 505 FNS Grade Road here in Seidro Woolley, and this proposal would be developed in three phases. My name is Aiden Reeves. I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Loss Center, who the city has selected to hold certain land use application hearings like this one. And today it will be my role to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether this proposal complies with the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a preliminary plat under chapters 1604 and 1608 of the Seidro Woolley municipal code, as well as the other ordinances in the municipal code. In addition, because the proposal involves the subdivision of land, ensure that it complies with our state subdivision act, which is in chapter 5817 of the revised Code of Washington. In advance of the hearing, I received 16 exhibits that I had an opportunity to review, which we'll talk about in more detail, but those included a staff report prepared by city staff, the application materials themselves, information on the checklist that was prepared under our state's Environmental Policy Act or CIPA, along with the CIPA determination, mitigated determination of non-significance or MDNS that was ultimately issued, public comments, and there were several, and I am going, I had two new ones that came in in the last two days, I would say, and I intend on just adding them into what has been identified from the staff as Exhibit E. That would be my intent. But I did review all these comments. These includes comment include comments from Michelle Bachelor, Patrick Hanen, and Cohen, Mary and Kevin McGoffin, Yvonne and Glenn Michael, Gay, Gayleen and Sean Rock, and I think they had a couple that were submitted from the SRSC Skagit River System Cooperative, the Seidro Woolley School District, Department of Ecology. See, did I miss anyone? I think. See another comment from the rocks and Patrick Hating. So I think that's all of them, but should anyone have additional comments or exhibits that they wanted admitted into the record, let me know when it's your opportunity to testify. And I'll go ahead and address, address admitting additional exhibits at that time. I got off track there. The other things that I reviewed in advance were the developer agreements that has been prepared in advance related to sort of the road system and phasing. In addition, the application materials, including the preliminary plat map, and then various reports, including a critical areas assessment and mitigation plan, and additional information of a technical nature. So those exhibits will be deemed admitted, as I said, if there are others, let me know. Speaking of testimony as well, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation. Essentially, everyone but our attorney, Mr. Schutz, will be sworn in if you are going to testify. Attorneys don't get sworn in. They I'm not listening to them for purposes of the facts, if you will. They can make legal arguments and they can call on folks on their team, but they're not here essentially to provide facts of clarify that. And I may ask questions of those that are participating. I'm not trying to trip anyone up. I'm just trying to ensure I have a thorough understanding of the proposal so that within 10 business days of the record closing, I'm able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we're going to follow today is first, I'll hear from city staff who will sort of give an overview of the proposal and discuss the review that occurred in advance of our hearing today. Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Schutz on behalf of the applicants to present any arguments and call on any witnesses that he would like to call upon. Then we will see if there are members of the public interested in testifying, and if so, they will have that opportunity at that time. Folks will remain muted until we get to the various points in the hearing where it is appropriate to hear from others. That's the, the way this would work, even if we were all in the same room, but with the remote meeting technology to ensure there's no crosstalk or talking over each other, I will try very clearly to indicate who I would like to hear from so that everyone knows what's going on. And as I stated, for members of the public, if you are interested in testifying, you will have that opportunity in, we'll call it the third leg of the proceedings after we hear from city staff and the applicants. And then if appropriate and necessary, at the end, after hearing from members of the public, I'll go back to applicant representative and city staff to respond to any such testimony. Finally, I note that clearly there are differences of opinion, not just in City of Seidro Woolley, but everywhere in Washington when it comes to how development should occur. And that's clearly understandable, but I do ask everyone to treat each other with respect and civility. We're not in a courtroom, but you know, we're trying our best to ensure that we all get along. And I will try to facilitate that. I think this is the kind of group that can handle that. Haven't had many problems in Seidro Woolley with that kind of thing in the past, but I always do like to note it and remind everybody of that. So I think with that, we'll go ahead and get Mr. Coleman sworn in and we'll get started. And thank you for being here, sir. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
Thank you. And could you just clearly spell your name for the audio recording and then explain what your role is here at the city?
I am John Coleman, J O H N C O L E M A N, the planning director for the City of Seidro Woolley.
Thank you. And I may turn my video feed off at various points. I'm not disappearing. I do have a face for radio and it's just a way to ensure I'm not distracting anyone, but know that I am definitely listening and still here. Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Coleman. Go right ahead.
All right, so this, this project as, as described in the staff report, I think, I think the staff report says it also. Hopefully everybody had a chance to review it thoroughly. Clearly, the hearing examiner described the basics of it, so I'm not going to go too much into the details of the, of the project itself. What I do want to say is this project has been thoroughly reviewed by staff, by the applicant. There's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of cooperation between this, the, the city and this, and the applicant to get to the, get this project to where it is right now. Clearly, you can see from the staff recommendations on this project that staff in the city are supportive of this project. You can probably tell from the procedural history involved that there's been a lot of details and a lot of back and forth information and that's really borne out in the developers agreement that goes along with this project. The developers agreement was intended to clarify everybody's position and really get everybody in agreement on where to go and who does what, and a lot of details, a lot of blood, sweat and tears have been put into this project. The developer agreement that I provided a copy of in the, in the staff report is an unsigned agreement. It's just going through the process of being approved by the, the city and the applicant, but there, there's been good faith towards that. The city council has already approved the developer agreement. There is just a technical change that has occurred. So we don't have a final change. And so for the hearing examiner's benefit, you'll notice that this project is ultimate is owned by Bucko Survivor Trust. The members of the Bucko Survivor Trust have changed the LLC name. And if you want, you can ask them more about the procedural history of that. But it is now officially owned for for legal purposes, though it doesn't yet show in the assessors page that it is the Bucko Property LLC. So if you have any curiosity about why the name change, you can ask the applicant. We, we are still waiting technically. We don't anticipate any errors or problems, but we, we still technically waiting for, you know, the paperwork on that to come through. So we can tell who is involved in all, but it has looked it up down the Secretary of State page and the applicants. The, the representatives of, of that LLC are Sarah and Laura Bucko, who are of course the people involved in Bucko Survivor Trust. So there's nothing unusual. It's just a change of name.
Sure. And just to be clear on that point, Mr. Coleman, in some jurisdictions that I work in, the hearing examiner gets involved with development agreements or developer agreements. My understanding here is I, I'm not putting any sort of my stamp of approval or anything on that on the developer agreement. The agreement is between, you know, I guess it will be Bucko Property LLC and the city, and obviously it, it impacts this proposal and, and clarifies a whole lot of things, but you know, I'm only looking at it in terms of the overall criteria for a review for the plat itself as opposed to you're not, nobody's waiting on me to sign off on this thing. Am I understanding that accurately, Mr. Coleman?
You're saying that accurately, and you portrayed it accurately. Also, we provided this in the hearing examiner documentation because it provides a lot of details and fills in a lot of blanks. And we thought was very useful and important to the understanding of this overall project.
Sure. Thank you for clarifying. Go right ahead.
So aside from the name change, and there'll be some documentation that goes along with that with the application as well. Everything is as described in the hearings examiner staff report. We as staff and as a city, we're supportive of the project. As you can tell from the developer agreement and the staff report, this project incorporates a in a provision of an arterial road that goes from the northern part of this property to Cook Road. And that is described in our city comprehensive plan transportation element as a planned route. And so the negotiations about how, you know, the costs born of that and how it affects this plat was pretty key to the staff report and developer agreement. So those things are are well thought out and, and hopefully well described and understood through the, through the documentation. So staff is supportive of this project still, and as I said, and we just included some staff recommendations that I'll go through here briefly for the record. That you could see on page 13 of the, the staff report, the recommendations written out clearly. All development shall be, shall generally conform to the preliminary plat map as shown in Exhibit H. That's kind of boilerplate normal stuff. Comply with the mitigation measures in, in the CIPA MDNS, provide an eight foot wide crushed rock trail on the outer edge of the buffer area on the south side of Brickyard Creek. And I'm going to come back to these. I think I'll just read them through here to the, to begin with. Actually, I'm not going to read through all of them because some of them are kind of technical aspects. As far as, you know, providing certain things that were part of the, the process of going through back and forth with the application, with the applicants as we review this, and they said they wanted to have, to see some of these things instead of showing it in the paperwork at the time to show it later. And ask for, ask for them to be instead of shown in, in the preliminary plat to be just required conditions of the, of the plat approval with one notable exception of of the, the provide an eight foot wide crushed rock trail. So that's going to be the issue that we probably hear a lot about. So when this project was originally proposed, there was a trail going through the, proposed through the protected critical area, kind of meandering through the middle of it. We got comments from the trying to think of the Skagit River Systems Co-op saying that they didn't like the trail going through the middle of the critical area because it's creates habitat fragmentation. And so the applicant removed it from the, from the applicant, application materials and subsequent submittals. Now the, the, the city has reasons to, to want that trail. One, we maintain Brickyard Creek as also a drainage course. So we do need to get into the, near the creek to remove large already debris or blockages, et cetera, for maintenance of that water course. So being being a trail through there allows the city access to do its maintenance. Also that it's, it would be necessary access for the homeowners association, homeowners association that will be maintaining the, the critical area as part of the, the project application. What you can see is that the the, the protected critical area is a standard 110 foot buffer, but they're allowed to reduce it down to 55 feet by providing enhanced mitigation. So right now that area is mostly grass, some blackberry and just un-maintained, not great habitat area. So as part of that, they're going to be improving it per the critical areas maintenance and a plan to plant trees, and that's going to make, going to require maintenance. So we wanted to have a trail to allow the homeowners association to be able to get in there and maintain the plantings, which is an important part of keeping them healthy. Also, we've received public comments stating an interest in having a trail through that area, which staff does see as a benefit to the community. And as requested, we think that also lends support to having a trail through that area. As mentioned before, the Skagit, Skagit River Systems Co-op had said that they didn't want it going through the middle of the buffer, but the documentation shows that they're supportive of having the trail on the edge of the buffer area that no longer creates the, the fragmentation issue. So they were okay with that and actually support having a trail there for the reasons stated in their letter as well. So that's why staff is interested and requests that to be a requirement of the plat approval. Aside from that, there's not a, not a whole lot of, can not a whole lot of other things that the step that staff has to present on this plat. I'm sure you'll have some questions so far away.
Okay, so that concluded your comments. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. You actually covered some of what I was going to ask about. But in terms of if we, I guess, start with that trail that has been proposed. It's referenced in your recommended conditions of approval as number three, and it states that this trail, eight foot wide crushed rock trail on the outer edge of the buffer area, you know, should be provided. And I, I guess I'm hoping to get a little more specificity on what is meant by the outer edge of the buffer area. In some jurisdictions, this is dealt with in their critical areas code explicitly as to, you know, what is allowed in certain portions of a critical area buffer. I don't know off the top of my head if, if it is so addressed in your municipal code, but in, as a, for example, a lot of jurisdictions would allow something like this, a trail in the outer 25% of the buffer area. But in terms of, you know, what we're going to ultimately, you know, what would potentially be allowed were I to approve this proposal, I think some specificity on what counts as the outer edge would be helpful. Do you have any thoughts on what that would constitute?
So yeah, it's, it's within the buffer area, but on the outside periphery of the, the 55 foot buffer area. So if it's 55 feet wide and the passive recreation trail, which are allowed in our critical areas for critical areas ordinance, does, that would be, you know, with the, the outside 48 feet, you know, there'd be 48 feet of, of enhanced area and then eight feet of crushed rock trail.
Okay, so in your mind, it's the very edge. The trail is at the, the, it would be the eight feet adjacent to
within lots themselves. It's within the buffer area.
But essentially you've got 55 feet of buffer. Here's Brickyard Creek, you know, 47 feet of buffer, enhanced buffer, and then that last eight feet before you, you know, hit the lots themselves, that would be where the trail goes. Is that a correct understanding?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, so I, I will, we'll ask Mr. Schutz in a minute about that, but I think I understand now and I may, you know, clarify that, that, that recommended condition, you know, with that understanding, just so it's abundantly clear what the intent is. So there's, you know, no confusion down the road. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I appreciate the clarification.
Sure. And I guess in that same sort of line there, are there any requirements on protecting critical areas in perpetuity with something like fencing, anything to that extent? And if so, could, could you provide any detail about that?
No, we didn't have any, any, anything specific in mind. With the exception of there are, there is signage required along the edge of a, of a critical area, but I'm not, not entirely sure that our critical areas ordinance requires a fence. If it does, you know, that'll be part of just the project application.
Right. The, the project shall comply with all of the critical areas requirements as part of this. I was just trying to make sure it's clear that, well, I guess one other thought too is, you know, are these, is this critical area being set aside, as it were, in its own tract? Anything to that extent? Often, you know, you'll have what in a lot of jurisdictions are known as NGPAs or native growth protection areas, but essentially you, you put them in their own tract and there's language, you know, on the face of the plat itself that essentially says, you know, this is a protected area. It shall be so protected in perpetuity. You know, that kind of a thing. Has any thought been given to that?
Yes, that, that, that language will be included and the homeowners association will own the protected critical area tracts.
Okay, so the tracks don't get dedicated to someone else or the city. They're going to be maintained by the homeowners association is the expectation. But also that these are protected critical areas.
They will be dedicated to the homeowners association owned and maintained by the, by the homeowners association for the critical areas ordinance requirements.
Sure. And if a bunch of no good nicks move in and aren't taking care of it, God forbid, we don't want that to happen, but if it happens, does the city have a way to go in and, you know, take care of things itself if, you know, the HOA is not doing what it is intended to do?
Yes, the critical areas ordinance does have requirements for maintaining and and looking it up real quick to, to see enforcement measures. There is a article, seven of the critical areas ordinance is compliance and enforcement.
All right. So there, there is a mechanism in a way by which you know, if, if there's something bad happening or nothing is happening, but things should be happening to ensure that Brickyard Creek is appropriately protected in the future is the basic concept, correct?
Yes, we have a comprehensive critical areas ordinance that has a hammer to make sure that it's maintained properly.
I like has a hammer. Okay, that makes sense. So thank you for clarifying that. The developer agreement again is quite detailed. And as you explained, you know, the, you expect it'll, it'll go through without substantive changes to the document. It's more of a, a technical issue in terms of the, you know, name of the party. Is that accurate?
Right. Yeah. So the, the city council has already approved it. And then we learned of the name change. So we're sending it back to them just as a consent agenda item to, to show that the document is changing, however, not substantively.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. Another question I had, had to do with the comment in particular that I received in advance from the school district in terms of, I guess, is it a bus depot?
Yeah. So adjacent to this, adjacent to this property to the west is, well, really the southwest is the, the school bus facility. So they park their buses there at night, which means they also operate their buses out of there and buses can be noisy. So the school districts, I believe the intent of the school district letter was to say, you know, it's a, a sort of a non-disclosure, hey, we, we operate buses here and we, we don't want to receive any complaints about us running our buses here in the future.
Sure. I guess my thinking and, and I can also get your thoughts and later Mr. Schutz's thoughts on this, you know, and circumstances like this, one option is to include language, you know, on the face of the plat, identifying this as a pre-existing use. Just that way there's notice to future homeowners. That would be one possibility. I'm just trying to think of a way to, you know, make clear to those that might be purchasing in the neighborhood that there, there is this pre-existing use, but has any thought been given to how to make that work so that it's clear to those?
There hasn't been any discussion at the city level of that, you know, considering that that affects the property owners of the people that purchase that land. It, it, it sounds reasonable to me. It all, it sounds like something that really the, the owner of the property and developer of the land may ultimately have a, a interest in seeing done. So I'll let you communicate that with the, with the applicant and see what they think, but the city has no objection.
Okay. And then I guess the final question or final thing I wanted to touch on with you before we move to the applicants had to do with phasing. Can you just sort of give a rough overview of what the phasing looks like or is proposed here? And you know, so in some jurisdictions, there's specific requirements to allow phase development there, you know, and state law, it's changed. Mr. Schutz probably knows better than I do, but it's changed several times. At one point up to 10 years was allowed for a phase plat. It was five years, then eight, then 12. I don't know. So I just want to ensure that we have an idea in mind on were this to be approved, you know, how long does the applicant have to accomplish its goals? So if you could just speak to that.
I was just anticipating following whatever the current state law on it is. And hopefully, I don't know off the top of my head, but hopefully it states some dusting, you know, is it eight years from the time that the preliminary plat is approved? Or I assume that's the way it's presented, but I actually do not know what the current length of time for phasing is allowed.
Okay, I don't know. Okay, I don't know off the top of my head, but I will probably be looking it up, uh, and I can come back, or maybe Mr. Schutz knows off the top of his head. But as far as you know, there is nothing within your own municipal code, uh, that sets a time limit on these things, is that right?
So our own municipal code does not specifically address timing, what it does is it says, uh, it sets if a five-year, let me make sure I'm speaking about that right. Preliminary plat is valid for five years unless extended pursuant to sixteen oh eight oh six four. And that, that is as far, uh, we have phased development in sixteen oh eight oh three oh. Portions of approved preliminary plat may be processed separately for recording divisions, provided that all the divisions are approved within the prescribed time limits for the preliminary plat and provided that the division does not violate the intent of the preliminary plat, so they have five years.
Okay, great, thank you. Excellent. Uh, thank you for clarifying that. Um, I don't think I had any other specific questions at this moment, I may have more later, um, but thank you for answering those questions. Finally, I just want to ensure that, uh, we're on the same page in terms of the exhibits, uh, that, uh, were submitted. So as I noted, these, let's see, let me get that out from the staff report. I believe the staff report had identified the exhibits as, uh, A through, through P. With P being the study area of the transportation element, uh, so I think that's taken out of your comprehensive, uh, planning documents. And then there were several comments, obviously, and I received these two additional comments. One earlier today, I think, and the other yesterday or the day before, and my intent was to add those, uh, to exhibit E which was the initial, uh, series of comments that were packaged together. Does that track with your understanding, Mr. Coleman?
Uh, I think, I think you can do it either way, if you want to add them as, uh, exhibit E to the existing comments, or if you want to add it as exhibit Q as, uh, comments, uh, received during, uh, public, uh, at, at, at public hearing. That's up to you, whichever, whichever you feel more comfortable doing.
Sure, but just to be clear, there were two additional comments, is that right?
Additional comments received.
There you go, so I believe one was from, uh, the rocks and the other was from Mr. Hayden, who I think is here and can speak to it if he so desires. I'm getting nods from Nicole, so I, I, she probably put the, the package, uh, exhibits together, so I think we're on the same page. Okay, anything further you wanted to add or anyone else on city staff you wanted to call upon before I turn to Mr. Schutz, Mr. Coleman?
No, just except for, you know, we look, we look forward to getting this approved, you know.
Okay, well, thank you. So at this point, uh, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Schutz. Mr. Schutz, thank you for being here. And if you could just spell your name for the audio and then explain who you are and that you're attorney, uh, and you understand I won't be swearing you in or swearing at you or anything to that effect, uh, but, uh, I do know you to be uh, an honest and trustworthy attorney, uh, regardless, but go ahead, Mr. Schutz.
My name is Ruben Schutz, that's R-E-U-B-N-S-C-H-U-T-Z. I am the attorney here today on behalf of the applicant, uh, Sarah and Laura Bucko. I, I understand I will not be sworn in, I can't speak as whether you'll swear at me, that's a, your discretion, but hopefully not.
I hope not as well.
Uh, just a couple preliminary comments, um, just to echo what, uh, Mr. Coleman said, um, there's been a good working relationship between the applicant and the city. Especially with regard to this development agreement, which is a benefit, um, to the city, getting this arterial through. It was sort of a complicated process, um, worked closely with the city attorney on good terms and were able to get this, um, approved by the council. And so I'm appreciative of all the efforts that went into that. With regard to the project, I think the staff report does a good job of laying it out. Um, I've asked Hyken Nelson, who is the engineer for this project for the applicant. She's there under the John Ravnick, uh, label, um, if you're looking for the face. And she's here to answer any questions that you may have with regard to, um, technical aspects of, of the plat, um, the site plan, et cetera. But I know that, uh, the hearing examiner likes to run, uh, tight ship, um, and so with regard to that, um, I'd probably leave it to you to ask specific questions you may have rather than go into sort of a long and drawn out, um, presentation. But I would like to address, uh, one of the conditions, I'd like to ask, uh, some questions of Mr. Coleman, and then I have two witnesses, um, to that I'd like to question very briefly, um, with regard to the, uh, path.
Uh, sure, that would be fine with me, uh, so you had, you wanted clarification from Mr. Coleman to start on at least one of these proposed conditions?
Correct.
Okay, so go right ahead, if we can unmute Mr. Coleman so that you can hear his responses, that will work for me.
Good afternoon, Mr. Coleman, um, I have several questions I like to ask and they pretty much all relate to the, uh, condition number three, which is the eight-foot wide crushed rock trail. I think you mentioned, um, in your presentation that one purpose, um, or of the path is for a public access recreation, is that correct?
No, I, I stated that, uh, that was for, uh, the city to be able to get into there to do maintenance and that the, uh, and for the homeowners association to be able to get in there and do maintenance as well. Uh, I stated that there is a public comment requesting a public trail, uh, requesting a trail in there and you can look at the details of, of that as far as public or, um, neighborhood or what.
Uh, and, and I may have misheard when, uh, you were, you were speaking before, so is it with the city? Would, would it be accurate to say the city does not have a position on whether the trail should be open to the public?
Well, the, you know, city council hasn't passed anything as far as a position on that. So, I guess there's no official position besides, you know, it would be you know, we've received public comments that it would be a, a public benefit, so, uh, we don't, we don't have a strong position on the, the public access part.
I guess, I guess maybe sitting a different way, if, if, if the applicant was to propose having, you know, gates placed on there that gave the city access for maintenance, but kept the public out, um, would the city have an issue with that?
I, I can't speak for the city, so.
Okay.
If that would serve, that would serve the, the public works department and the, and the, uh, and the homeowners association needs. Now, there's, you know, so I, I can't speak for the city about a public drought.
Okay, um, a couple, just a couple of questions on sort of the public access aspect, I understand, uh, based on what you said, these are, aren't asking your position on, on the benefits or, or, or whether the city wants it or not, but, um, if the path was put in, would it be, would it connect to any other public trails? To your knowledge?
There's, there's no, uh, public trails, uh, besides sidewalks on either side of it. So, there's, it's not part of a, a regional transfer, a regional trail system, although there have been requests for, uh, making a, a trail system along the Brickyard Creek to serve in the community's interest.
So is it, has that got into the planning stage yet, or is that just thoughts or ideas that have been floated?
It's, it would just be ideas at this time.
So there's no, no trail planned, uh, for that, along that corridor, um, in the six-year capital improvement plan? Or no, no financing that's been put forth for something like that?
No financing, I can't speak to the six-year transportation plan, um, I can look that up, uh, here while we're having our discussion if you'd like.
Oh, you can wait. Uh, my understanding is that plat paths are allowed in buffers, uh, but there's not a requirement of the development regulations, isn't it?
It's correct.
Okay. The project itself has, uh, nearly thirty thousand, uh, square feet of open space parks, um, and complies with their recreation amenities under the, the city's code, is that correct?
There's.
And I don't want to, I don't want to trip you up on the numbers, if, if it's the city's position that the project complies with the recreation requirements under the code, that's, that's really what I'm getting at.
Well, yeah, uh, the developer agreement, the overall, it meets the, the recreation requirements in chapters, uh, was it seventeen thirty-eight?
And when you say that, just hopping in here, do you mean it meets the requirement regardless of this trail? Meaning, you know, if I'm looking at the plat, uh, developed area, there's these recreation tracks set aside and the trail is, is independent of those numbers, am I understanding the question, Mr. Schutz?
Yeah, you actually phrased it a lot better than I did, that is the question, yes.
Okay, so can you speak to that, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, as we, as stated in the staff report, the, the recreation tracks, which do not include the, the PCA, meet the, meet the requirements of chapter seventeen thirty-eight for recreation area.
So it, um, it's compliant with the recreation requirements even without the path?
Yeah.
Yeah. You mentioned, uh, maintenance, um, and you disappeared, but I presume you can still hear me?
I can still hear you.
Okay, good. You mentioned maintenance of the, of the Brickyard Creek. The creek is, uh, Skagit County right away, is that correct?
No, it, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a creek, so it's a water of the state, it's, uh, you know, managed by the city for, um, for critical areas per, you know, state regulations and per our city regulations, and it's also, uh, the city maintains the, the drainage course.
So I was looking at a, um, uh, document, I don't have it in front of me, um, and so I may have this wrong if things have changed, but my understanding was that it was deeded in part of Skagit County ditch di- district number fourteen, um, and, uh, was made part of Skagit County right away, at least as to the creek itself?
Yeah, that was dedicated back to the city, uh, in ten years plus.
Okay, good, thank you, that.
Went away and, and the county gave it to the city.
Okay, thank you, that, that filled in a gap, um, so the city has maintenance responsibilities for the creek?
Correct.
Okay. The, one condition, um, that, uh, the applicant is, is not, not contesting, um, is this, um, twelve-foot gravel access road that goes over the existing culvert at that, I'd say the northeast corner of the project, you aware of that?
Uh, what, what is the specific question?
I, I guess, um, that there, eh, one condition is this twelve-foot gravel access road.
So, uh, that was, that was actually a request of the applicant to put it there.
Okay.
They wanted that twelve-foot gravel access road, and so, um, that was one of the things that as we went back and forth with the, you know, just what the plat, the, the, the map looked like. That we would, um, that we would, uh, put that as a, as a condition, so that was, that was the requested, there was some uh, discussion about where it went to and, uh, you, you know, a great city would like it to terminate at Thurmond Road and so as not to make it look like a road coming off of, uh, F and S Grade Road. That, that's why.
When you say, I'm sorry, Thurman, I, and this is something I was hoping to clarify.
Yes, it's, it's now called Y Road.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
So this would, this twelve, uh, foot gravel access road, um, would connect to the eight-foot wide crushed rock trail? That's how the, it's proposed under the, under the recommendations, correct? And that's how the city would access the eight-foot, uh, crushed gravel trail?
Yeah, well, and of course it would also connect at, uh, North Trail Road on the, oh, on the west side of the where the, where the creek go, crosses, uh, North Trail Road.
Okay. So the, the twelve-foot access drive would give the city access to the creek?
In, in theory, yeah, that would be the eastern outlet through that, uh, as, as for maintenance through there.
And, and does the city have any other easement rights to cross the property to access the, the ditch?
That would be something I would have to look at with the, uh, with that access easement that was part of the, the, the dyke, uh, the dyke and drainage, the drainage district. And so I specifically don't know the, the clauses in the, the transfer language to the, to the city. But as my understanding that, you know, we would have access across anything within the, the creek area.
And I'm gonna hop in for one sec, Mr. Schutz, I feel like to understand the forest or from the trees. I, this is a lot of questions specific to, I guess, uh, proposed conditions three and four. Does the applicant have an idea in its mind on how you would like to see these conditions changed?
Uh, yeah, and I can clarify that, and then, and then you can kind of direct my questions if you think I'm getting off track or?
Yeah, well, I just, if we reverse engineer.
Yeah.
Might help Mr. Coleman understand and certainly it'll help me understand the point of the line of questioning. You know, because right now I'm going, okay, I, you know, is there an ultimate, where are we going with this? I, are you hoping that, uh, you know, the trail is deeded to the city and it becomes its responsibility? Or is that, you know, I guess kind of what's the idea here?
Sure, so, um, briefly, um, the, the applicant would like the, would like the condition removed.
Entirely.
Entirely.
And that's condition three.
Condition three, correct, um, leaving the twelve, uh, foot access road for the city to have access to the creek. Um, and if, as an alternative, if that, um, if that is not, um, acceptable to the hearing examiner, um, then, um, a, a gate or some other, uh, restriction on the public um, access to that location that would allow the city to come in and, and HOA, but nobody else.
And I assume this is, uh, what, a safety issue in the applicant's mind, they don't want the public to?
Safety and, safety and privacy, I have landscape architect who could testify to his opinion on that if, if you'd like, but yes, that's the idea is people, um, hanging out behind their graffiti, um, messing with the plantings, et cetera.
Okay, so now that we're aware of kind of where you were ultimately going, uh, I'll let you ask Mr. Coleman what you feel like you want to ask him, but hopefully now he has an idea as
Yeah.
Where all that was headed.
And I appreciate that. Do the houses or the project itself, um, stop the city from accessing the, the creek to do maintenance repair?
Do the houses?
I mean, does the project?
Well, with, without a, without a, without a path through there, the city can't drive its maintenance vehicles through there to access the creek, so they, they use a, um, they use a tractor with a, with an arm on it and to, to access through the area, oh, oh, the stretch of the entire creek. And so they would continue to, and then what other, other vehicles they might need in there to, uh, to tend to any blockages or, uh, you know, landslides or debris in there, so, uh, that, that's what that's the, the maintenance issue.
Okay.
Vehicles they'll be putting through there.
So you would, you would have access on foot from the twelve-foot road, um, the concern of the city is that vehicle access?
Well, the, it would, if, if it just terminated, uh, yeah, uh, if it just gave them access across the the culvert and not all the way through the area, then they would, they wouldn't be able to access the whole area.
Okay.
And considering that we're putting in mitigation planting in there, um, we didn't want to have to drive over mitigated planting. Want to be able to ha, get our vehicles in there in a, in a, in a safe and, and, uh, manner that's gonna respect the, the plantings.
Okay, and the plantings themselves, that's gonna be a responsibility of the HOA, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the city wouldn't be maintaining the plantings, but there is other issues that they're concerned of with regard to the blockage of the creek itself?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for for this witness, Mr. Coleman.
Okay, so we can move on from there. I guess before we do, Mr. Coleman, just to be clear, the applicant has indicated it would prefer that condition three that's been recommended be removed entirely. It seems like there had been kind of a back and forth with the applicants in the city that led to this being proposed as a condition. And so in your mind, Mr. Coleman, the, that particular trail wasn't required in terms of obviously open space or recreation or necessarily as, you know, part of mitigation for the proposal. But there are certainly access issues and reasons why the city would, would like to have an eight-foot wide crust rock trail at the outer eight feet of that buffer. Is that an accurate assessment?
Right, yeah, it's, it's, it's necessary for, for access for maintenance.
And ultimately, if I understood you correctly, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, the city doesn't have a position necessarily on whether this is a public good and should be publicly accessible, but the city does have a position that, you know, it would like this to exist in terms of the maintenance ultimately of Brickyard Creek, correct?
That seems fair to say.
Okay.
I think you, I think you summarized properly.
Hopefully, okay. So I, I'll have to think all that through, but Mr. Schutz, anything further based on my sort of summing things up and putting words into Mr. Coleman's mouth? Go right ahead.
Uh, no, Mr. Examiner. No more questions for Mr. Coleman.
Excellent. Mr. Coleman, we might come back to you later. Thank you. Mr. Schutz, you had some other witnesses then you intended?
Yeah, just briefly, Peter Dillon.
Okay, identified as Patrick Dillon.
Sorry, Patrick, I'm sorry, Patrick.
No problem. I'm gonna get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
And could you just clearly spell your name for the audio recording?
The first name is Patrick, P A T R I K. The last name is Dylan, D Y L A N.
Okay, and your specific role with the proposal?
I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Washington. I have an office in Mount Vernon, and I was in charge of the landscape and recreation amenity design for this project.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna turn you over to Mr. Schutz to ask questions at this point.
I, I would ask, normally I ask briefly qualifications. I know the examiner doesn't like us to go deep into that, so I see that not the shake of the head, and I think we can just move past that and agree that Patrick is a, is a qualified landscape architect. And part of being a landscape architect and the expertise involved in that is, is part of that the layout of projects with regard to privacy and safety?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And in your professional opinion, do you have any concerns with having that eight-foot crushed gravel trail abutting owners' fences and backyards in this project?
You know, when we did the original layout, we had a trail through the buffer, but it was detached and not adjacent to the backyard fences, because the idea was that if there are people in their backyard picnicking or hanging out with family members, if there were members of the public immediately adjacent to that fence, it would it would deter from their quiet enjoyment and their just general sense of privacy. So when we originally laid out the, the trail, we had it away from the fence, so that way the homeowners would still be able to maintain a sense of privacy.
So one, one, one concern is privacy with a thin fence between a public trail and the backyards of the homeowners? Did you also have any concerns with safety or property damage?
Typically, people will do bad things when it's easy for them to do so. And initially, the, the trail had a split rail fence on either side of it, and then there was native plantings between that split rail fence and the property line fence. So with, with that kind of a setup, we felt like there was enough of a physical barrier or separation between the trail and the private property that we were not concerned about vandalism, things like that. But if there's, if there's a trail immediately adjacent to the fence, it just seems like it's an easier target.
An easier target for what exactly?
You know, the kids who want to paint graffiti and things like that.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for Mr. Dillon. Oh, you're muted, Mr. Examiner.
Sorry about that. I was typing a note and I didn't want to make noise unduly, but I didn't have any specific questions for Mr. Dillon. But I thank you for being here. Your next witness you intended to call?
Mary Harenda. Okay, Mary Harenda, excuse me. I'm blowing it on the names, I'm blowing it on the names today.
No problem at all. So I'll get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in any testimony you give here today?
I do.
And could you just clearly spell your name for the audio recording?
My first name is Mary, M A R Y. My last name is Harenda, H A R E N D A.
I think you had it right, Mr. Schutz.
I was just noting that.
You're overly apologetic. It's rare in an attorney. And Ms. Harenda, could you just briefly explain your role, who you are, et cetera, and then I'll turn you to Mr. Schutz to ask whatever questions he would like to ask?
I'm the critical areas consultant for the project. I'm a professional wetland scientist and a fisheries biologist with over thirty years of experience in the Pacific Northwest. And I completed the critical areas assessment and the critical areas mitigation plan for the project.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Schutz.
So we'll, we'll skip over the qualifications and, as well for you, and just get right into.
I'm familiar with this witness as well, so.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
So mitigation planting and maintaining those plantings, that's part of your expertise and part of the role you played in this project?
Yes.
Okay. And in your professional opinion, do you have any concerns with the eight-foot path and where it's located?
I do have some concern, yes.
Could you just kind of give us an overview of those?
Right, so I know that the, the trail as it's proposed now, it's not really needed for long-term maintenance and access to get to the mitigation plantings, in my opinion. The type of maintenance that is going to be required of these plantings is typically done with hand equipment. So things you carry on your back, in your hands, string trimmers, shovels, clippers, that sort of thing. And so the, there's plenty of access points from the road where landscapers could park their vehicles and travel on foot through the mitigation area to do the required maintenance.
So, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so correct me if I have this wrong, but what you're saying is as far as the HOA is, for the HOA's maintenance, you don't believe that the path is required or necessary?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any other concerns with the path in the, in the mitigation buffer area generally, beyond the maintenance issue?
Well, I mean, in general, when you're talking about buffers, you know, you want your buffer to be intact. That provides the best protection for the critical area. So this buffer is already reduced by half from what the standard buffer is in the code. So the, the standard buffer would be a hundred and ten. Sevier Woolley Code allows it to be reduced by half with enhancement mitigation as we proposed. Proposing another eight-foot trail would then take eight feet out of that protective buffer. So now we're down from fifty-five feet to forty-seven feet. So that's a concern I have.
Okay. And, and there was, there was a path in the original submissions, correct?
There was a path in the original submissions. My understanding was that was a request requirement from the city. I mean, the, the path was in there in the beginning. I was asked to put a path and maintenance plantings in upon request of the city.
Yep, so your understanding is that it was a city request to start with, the applicant never really wanted a path there, and when when there was issues with where the path was, the applicant simply removed it thinking that would solve the problem?
Correct.
Okay.
And then I also have some questions I'd like to get some more information on about where the main access points would be for maintenance of the stream channel, drainage course, whatever you want to call it. Because if the path is at the outer edge of the buffer, that's forty-seven feet, you know, does the city have a piece of equipment with a forty-seven-foot reach that could reach all the way to the creek? If not, that equipment will still have to be going through presumably the planted buffer to get to the creek to do the maintenance. So that brings up some questions in my mind about, you know, long-term maintenance and monitoring, and somebody has to be responsible for meeting performance standards for the plantings and you know, what kind of potential problems that could cause in the future.
So I appreciate you doing my, your, my job for me and asking the question. I'd like to follow up just briefly on, on that. The forty-seven feet would be from the edge of the the crushed gravel trail to the edge of the creek?
Correct.
Okay, and the concern that you have that you've raised is that the responsibility of maintenance of the buffer is on the HOA? And there are provisions under the code that they could be held responsible and liable if, if there, if there's issues with that?
Yes, and I mean, it's typically a person like myself, a critical areas consultant, that is contracted to do that long-term monitoring. And so there are performance standards that have to be met on a yearly basis for the plantings. And so, you know, if there was some issue that arose and there was an emergency and the city had to go out and do some maintenance and went through the plantings, that would have to be addressed in terms of the monitoring and whose responsibility that would be to repair that and who would pay for it.
And is your, your concern is that if there's this access there and they don't have equipment that gives them the forty-seven-foot reach, that they're gonna do what they need to do and drive over the plantings?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for Ms. Ms. Harenda.
Great, just my, so just to be clear, in your mind, it would be preferable not to have that eight-foot trail, crushed gravel trail at the edge of the buffer? Is that an accurate assessment? I mean?
That is an accurate assessment.
The bigger the buffer, the better, in your mind? Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And also, you know, free from fragmentation, habitat fragmentation.
Sure, I mean, it'd be even worse to put the trail somewhere else if there's a trail. Is that, you know, you don't want to split up the buffer, you know, so it's sort of, you know, it if it has to go in, this is the best location, but preferably it wouldn't go in at all. Is that a good summary?
That is correct.
Okay, I understand your position. I thank you for answering my question there. Mr. Schutz, anything further based on that?
Just a couple of brief questions for Mr. Coleman.
Oh, okay, so are we done then with Ms. Harenda?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harenda. So you wanted to follow up with Mr. Coleman, and I will allow it, so go ahead.
Just based on what we heard from Ms. Harenda, has the, has the city ever used its boom trucks or from this distance to, to maintain the creek?
No, that wouldn't be possible. So here, you know, this, it's an unfortunate situation that Brickyard Creek is both a drainage course and a critical area. So we're striking accord to work the best we can while doing, well, allowing for the best habitat. Ideally, the Public Works Department would want a twelve-foot road right along the creek to get in there, but that's not a viable option. So this is, this is already a compromise on the city's part to have it, the, have a trail on the edge for access that is part of the city's requirements to maintain that, that that creek as a drainage course. So they do have to be in there with their vehicles and they need to have access. So is it ideal that it's at the edge? No. And if they'll need to, they will have to drive through to access the creek through the plantings, and then that will have to be managed, mitigated. But, you know, this is, it's, we're, we're doing the best that we can with the situation that it's not ideal to have, to have maintained it as a drainage course and as a critical area. But that is the, that is the, the reality of the situation, and there's there's state and city requirements that require both.
So, so is it, would it be accurate to say that the city doesn't have equipment that could reach it from the eight-foot crushed gravel trail, but it would use the crushed gravel trail to then make its way down to the creek at certain locations?
Though, you know, I am not the, the, I am not the Public Works Department that would go down there and do so, but presumably that's what they would have to do, yes. And of course, we would take as much care as possible. But they do, they do need access.
Okay, well, just to clarify further, and if you don't know the answer, Mr. Coleman, that's fine. But at least conceptually, if I understand, looking at the site plan and where this potentially would go, you know, this would at least at a minimum allow, you know, Public Works to drive, you know, park on the gravel and then walk down to the creek, you know, all the way along, right? I'm not saying there wouldn't be a situation where they needed to drive over mitigation planting if there was a major emergency or they needed heavy equipment, but at a minimum, right, the, the trail would at least provide, you know, kind of a a jumping off point throughout the entirety of the stretch of the creek in this area. Is, am I understanding that accurately?
Right, and of course they have to go through to do regular inspections as well. So not really expecting them to walk through doing an inspection. That's not the way that they do their inspections.
Unless, sorry, are you thinking to inspect?
So they'll also, they also have to go through to inspect occasionally to make sure that there's no problems in the creek, because they will not be able to view it from a distance.
Well, that I understand, but you're saying even if they have this trail just to do inspections, the city would drive over all this mitigation plant?
Oh, no, they would use, they would use the trail to access the area to do their inspections.
Park, walk, and look as opposed to do a drive-by, crush all the mitigation plantings? I just wanted to make sure I understood or didn't misunderstand what you were trying to explain. So could you clarify for me there, Mr. Coleman?
They would be using the trail to access the area so that they can do their inspections. And they would.
Likely on foot.
Finish the last part by walking from the truck and over and but they, they routinely, they routinely access along the creek.
Got it. Okay, sorry to interrupt. Did you have other questions there, Mr. Schutz?
No, I, I think I was done, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Out of curiosity, I have a question for Mr. Coleman, and if you don't have the answer off the top of your head, fine, but I guess one thought or question I had would be, you know, what is the city's position in terms of, you know, if, if it really wants this ten-foot gravel trail that the applicant doesn't want, you know, if the applicant were to, you know, deed it to the city and require the city to maintain it, does the city have any particular position on that?
I, I don't know, no. That hasn't been something that we've discussed.
Okay, Mr. Schutz, your thoughts? I felt like maybe you were heading in that direction. Obviously, the, the hope in your mind or from, if I understand correct, the applicant's mind is, let's just get rid of this, you know, eight-foot thing entirely, but if you know, in whatever wisdom or lack thereof, if the hearing examiner decides, no, let's keep it, what are you thinking? Or what, on behalf of your client, what is the thought there?
Sure, so, I mean, our thought, again, like you, like you just mentioned, was to, to get Sure. So I mean, our thought again, like you like you just mentioned was to to get rid of it and that the city can can. Have its jumping off point as was described at the at the end, you know, at the covert is and then can walk from there. Seeing as it doesn't have equipment that could reach from the the trail anyway. So we'd like it. We'd like it removed, but absent that, our thought was to at least at least to try to mitigate the concerns with regard to safety. Crime vandalism by limiting access to HOA and and the city. That could be accomplished by security gates and the city would have access something along those lines. We haven't talked to the city about the city having responsibility for the entire buffer area. And taking that out of the cost and and responsibility of the HOA.
Which is not what I was getting at there. I was saying just just that eight foot trail that, you know.
Yeah, I know.
My mind, but go ahead.
Yeah, for our concern is not that eight foot trailer maintenance of it. It's it's the safety. It's the it's the privacy and it's whether it's actually needed.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Shuts. Did you intend on calling any other witnesses?
No, like I said, we have representatives from the engineering firm who could speak to any questions you may have. But I thought that you would have the choice of whether you want to do that rather than us diving into some sort of presentation that's repetitive.
Sure, this is what I'm thinking. We do have members of the public, at least one, I think a few. That may be interested in testifying at this point. So what I would suggest we do is we move to that portion at this point and hear from members of the public. And then after that, we go back and and if I have nitty gritty questions on the engineering aspects. We can we can do that at the end so as to not bore people to death on details that they probably don't actually. Need to hear specifically about. So that was kind of my thinking, but would that work for you, Mr. Shuts?
It would.
Excellent. Okay, so essentially, there are several folks that have signed on. I. Definitely recognize Mr. Hayden's name from his comments, so I was gonna suggest I start there. And Mr. Hayden, were you interested in testifying today?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. I'm gonna swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yeah.
Could you clearly spell your name for the audio recording?
P A T R I C K H A Y D E N.
Great, thank you. Go right ahead. And like I said, I believe you had submitted two different comments.
Second one is unless it was an email to the planner that got submitted, I had about a four page letter.
I have that. Am I wrong? Maybe you didn't submit two comments. I I don't know.
There was also email. There's a typo, I think, on the plat that. Which I'll comment on you. We could clarify it later.
Sorry, it was, you had a comment initially in response to the NDNS that was issued. I think that was the thing one. A short comment and then the the long letter that I received, I think yesterday. That that I think is what you're referencing. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll quit interrupting you and let you say what you like to say. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Go right ahead.
Okay, first of all, my name is Pat Hayden. I live in Cedro Wully. My address is one oh nine Warner. I. Just for background, I used to be the city attorney and I was briefly the acting planner for the city when there wasn't a planner back in. About two thousand five. And I'm currently on the park committee, which is purely an advisory committee. We they give it. It's a. Designation of honor and and no authority. And I used to be a board member of Skagit Fisheries Enhancement, but that was about twenty years ago. But I'm familiar with Brickyard Creek. I'm familiar with its role in the floodway as a flood stormwater conveyance, and I'm familiar with its role as fisheries. Resource and also to a limited extent as a park or trail resource. There was an effort. When I was. Planner to try to get a trail all along the entire corridor. But I left the city in two thousand five, the civil side anyway. And I don't know what happened to that work, but the comprehensive plan. Has reference to a trail along either Brickyard Creek or its tributaries. Specifically with regard to the SAP road track, the property that the city owns and also with the property owned by Fire District number two. These are both referenced in the comprehensive plan. And then there are other references to other parcels and trails in the plan. The plan has a number of policy statements I quoted in the letter. That were formally adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. And I'm not going to go through all those right now. They're in the letter and I adopt it by reference in my testimony, but the plan makes clear. That the city wants to promote trails both as a recreational resource and also as a. Non-motorized transportation element. And so the transportation element also references trails. And trails in critical areas and along are specifically referenced and encouraged in the comprehensive plan. And I've quoted those sections in my letter. Is it adequate just to refer to my letter generally for those references?
Yes, and I have read it. I have it actually printed out right in front of me, Mr. Hayden, and I don't I don't need to read it into the record, so.
I don't want to bore you by pointing out the many places where it talks about trails. And the specific places where it talks about trails in critical areas because they provide. The the reason for that is they provide a. A cost effective corridor for trails. The most cost effective place to put a trail is in an area where you can't build anything else. Second, creeks are really good because they travel the whole distance of something. And so it bothers me that we have a developer says, oh, well, we reduced the critical area by fifty percent because we provided some. Private play recreation areas and some other open space, but now gee, we don't have enough room for a trail when all along the city was asking for. A maintenance trail to begin with. So we're not looking at having reduced something below the threshold where a recreational trail would be a problem. The second thing is Brickyard Creek is the single most important. Natural stormwater conveyance in the city. It goes from the northeast part of the city to the southwest part and into the Skagit River. It. Totally fills up and flows backwards during a major storm event. And all all of the city, well, extremely large part of the city north of Highway twenty drains into this. There's a pretty big area where people can't build and in terms of weighing cost and benefit. The best place to put a trail is not going to be on a sidewalk or to buy developable land to put a trail. It's going to be in an area that. You can't build on anyway. Second. There's talk about privacy issues. You know, the most notorious trail in Washington is the Burke-Galman Trail. And every place that goes, people, whether they're industrial or commercial users or high end homeowners. They always say, gee, we have a privacy issue. There's going to be vandalism. There's going to be problems. You if that's the primary issue, you'll never have a trail. What makes a trail safe is design and usage. If a trail is heavily used and it's well designed, it'll do well. So I want to make clear that I'm not asking that the developer build a trail right now. I'm asking that the developer. Convey as part of a condition of development easement to the city for a public recreational trail. And as pieces get put together over time and some of those pieces will be on sidewalks and roads and some are going to be in natural areas. The city can in the future build a trail. Trails are like sewer. And roads, you can't have a trail and then cut a piece out of the middle and expect it to be used. This is a really large piece of Brickyard Creek. It flows from Cook Road. Up to the. Corner of FNS Grade Road, really, and. To get to omit this piece basically destroys a significant part of a future trail system.
Sorry, I'm gonna, Mr. Hayden, based on your knowledge and expertise on these issues, I had a question which was this. Thank you, by the way, for the thoroughness of the letter. I think it really explains the position. As I was thinking this through, one thought I had. Was, and again, you just pointed out that the success of a trail and the safety issues. You know, are usage, right? And the Burke-Galman Trail is successful and in part because of how heavily. Used it is and in a way that actually reduces things like crime in sometimes in areas because there are so many people out and about. So it's a little, you know, one of those. Not quite obvious things, but I guess my thinking is, as you noted, your hope wasn't. That a trail is immediately built, but the idea is you want to ensure that the that. There's some kind of access easement put in place such that. If down the road, a comprehensive trail does. Develop, you know, adjacent to Brickyard Creek. You know, it'd be possible for for the city to then at that time put a trail in. So I get that, A, I think I understand you correct. Is that?
You accurately have summarized the request at the bottom of my letter.
Okay, and so I guess what I'm thinking is at the current moment in time where there. This trail wouldn't really connect to anything at the moment, which.
It would do one thing. It would provide. I mean, I've got a cat that just jumped up in my. Before I throw him out here, you can he doesn't.
Oh, hello.
Yeah, it would provide pedestrian access through the center of this development. And it would bring kids significantly closer to the Janiki Playfields from the north end of this development. There's going to be more development north of this system. I know of other applicants who would like to build stuff. And. The primary kids play field in the areas, Janiki Playfield off Cook Road. So this development bridges that area. Some of the access would have to be on the Cook Road. But this would be part of a really good trail system that would run from the developments up as far as. So Coltest. Mountain Estates through the SOC estate development. It would pick up Brickyard Creek Development. It would pick up this development if this thing could be constructed. There's no doubt in my mind, some of this access is not going to be able to go on the trail for a variety of reasons. But it become it's a pretty. The time to set aside the right of way is before it gets built. If you try to go in after something is built, it's a nightmare to. Try to do it. You can't talk a hundred percent of the homeowners to convey an easement. It's really lost forever. The city's never going to condemn a trail, so it's a now or never thing and it's in your hands. I have a few more comments. I think the letter speaks for itself. And I don't want to take a lot of time. But I want to emphasize a couple of things. The city actually has a maintenance easement through this area right now. It by. Defining it as you're being asked, it's probably giving up. Access rights rather than acquiring more. There are two. The city acquired maintenance responsibility from Dyke Districts and Subflood Control District. There are two easements noted in the title report for this. I could not find one of them on the county records with the given auditor file number. But I'm pretty sure it's very similar to the first one that I could find. And they both give Dyke District access to. Do this entire piece of property really to do maintenance on the creek. And. By limiting itself to an eight foot corridor, the city really isn't giving up anything. Excuse me, it is giving up something and narrowing its access and defining it so that this development can occur without those easements being an impediment on. Property owners, but I'm pretty sure those Dyke District easements either are transferred by law or are effectively transferred to the city. Plus, the city has a prescriptive easement over this because it's been maintaining the system for decades. We've gone to court on. One of the sections of property and confirmed that the city has prescriptive easements over drainage ditches that go into Brickyard Creek. So the second thing, though, is if the city has such a big easement for maintenance purposes anyway. And it really needs the road, I think, to get in there efficiently and maintain the ditch as a drainage function. Because the homeowners aren't going to do it. If it's going to have. An eight foot pathway, making that a. Trail for recreation really isn't not an additional burden on anybody, at least in terms of real estate acquisition. It can't be developed anyway. It makes it extremely. High benefit and low cost to the developer. I do think it is a design question. I think I'm not going to say there aren't legitimate issues. About privacy or vandalism. You're looking at either very intently or as if you can't hear me. I. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I apologize for that. This is why I sometimes turn my video off, so.
I think the like the issues about, oh, well, gee, we might have people there who don't live here. We we'd rather have a private development. This isn't the first development that has raised that objection to letting the public onto recreational facilities. But I think it's really a question of design. There are a number of things that can be done ranging from fencing to public use. To visibility. To deal with that issue and it's always going to be there. Everybody would much rather have a. Have one hundred percent privacy, but in that case, we'd never have any trails. So I don't think that's an absolute barrier. You know, I do want to acknowledge, I don't think it's non existent. But that's partly why I don't think the trail needs to be built right now. I think it's something that needs to be dealt with in the future. There's a city council that would be involved in the decision. There's lots of room for public input. It's a resource question. All I really want to see is the easement for a private public facility. Granted, as part of this development.
Sure.
And and that's about it for right now, and if it's not clearly there now, it probably will never be there. This is, you know, the fisher cut bait moment.
Got it.
Any other questions or?
I understand your position. I think it's very clearly laid out in your letter and as just discussed just now. This is not an appeal hearing. Well, I'm not saying you were trying to appeal. What I was about to say was I wanted to see if Mr. Shuts. Had any specific questions for you. I, you know. The rules are a little vague as to if this is the way the procedure would work, but you know, you're a. A reformed attorney yourself, I think, Mr. Hayden, you get how it works. But, Mr. Shuts, did you have any clarifying questions for Mr. Hayden?
No, I think the position is clear. I would save any comments I had for argument.
Great. Okay, well, Mr. Hayden, thank you so much for participating and for the work you've done these many years. In the city of Cedro Wully.
I. Yep, that's all good. Thank you very much for the time. I'm gonna leave the hearing if you don't mind.
Not offended at all and we'll make sure that you receive a copy of the decision when it comes out. We have your email, so you'll be.
Question for you. I wasn't sure. Do you take notice of the comprehensive plan just in general or?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you don't have to. Yeah, I. I I'm the this trails along Brickyard Creek are mentioned and tributaries are mentioned in the comp plan. It's not that they're not there, but they're not in this. Mr. Coleman was correct. They're not in the six year tip. For this, it is, it's purely conceptual, but they Brickyard Creek Trails. And there there are a couple other. It has a bunch of different names. Are are in the comp plan, so it's not without a planning basis and the policy itself has clear support. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Okay, the next name that I see is, let's see, I have someone identified. As Kimberly Lil Green. If. Hi, are you folks interested in testifying?
James Ray is. I'm with him. It's just my computer.
Okay, I'm gonna swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And could you just state and then clearly spell your name for the audio recording?
James Ray, J A M E S R A Y.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Go right ahead.
Yes, Kim and I are the property owners. Like us directly to the. Be the West. We butt up to lots, one, two and three. On the on the proposal. on the, on the proposal. And our, our property runs back up to F and S Grade Road. And I have our parcel number if that will help.
I think I know where it is, but the address, I will, and I can just look that up on Google and see right where your, your property is if you want to convey that right now.
It's 533 F and S Grade Road.
Got it. Okay. And you had some comments you wanted to share?
Yes. Development coming up and we're, we're in support of it. During the process, I was speaking to David Lee because we got the letters in the mail, you know, about the project. And on this very south end of the project, there's a, it looks like an easement. Is that a utility easement? At the end of the project of the development, is that a utility? What is that exactly?
Okay, so we'll try to, rather than have necessarily a back and forth, you're hoping to get additional information on what that thing at the bottom is for one, and maybe we can have Mr. Coleman pull up one of the exhibits and we can sort of, I talk through that. So we'll try to get more information on that. Other thoughts there, Mr. Ray?
I guess I have another question for Mr. Coleman about the future of the Trail Road Extension. And sewer.
Okay, and what were, what were those questions? We'll try to get, I'm taking notes and we'll try to get answers after, after we hear from everybody.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll back up a little bit. In my conversation with David Lee, he mentioned the sewer would be put in this area here that I just mentioned. And that's because at some point we would like to develop our property in the future. Yeah, and so that, that's if we were to be able to ax the sewer from this point.
I don't want this project to hinder it.
And we don't want this project to hinder.
And my understanding, and I'll let Mr. Coleman or the applicant clarify if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that this proposed plat would connect to, let's see, the city of Seidro Wully Sewer System. As opposed to, say, Septic. So I don't know if that clarifies things, but you know, and then the nitty gritty on how if the sewer is coming down, how your property would eventually potentially connect to it is a bit beyond the scope of what I'm being asked to address, but.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Ray. So you're, you're hoping to get maybe some clarity on what future development looks like in relation to this property?
If, yeah, if we'd be able to access the sewer from our corner of our lot there.
And if that's going to be Trail Road.
And if what?
If that blank area is going to be Trail Road.
Yeah, and if that blank area might be part of the Trail Road Extension at some point. You know, at the south, yeah, that, yeah.
So clarification on those, those issues?
Yes.
Okay, anything further you want to share?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, I'm going to check to see if there are any other public comments before we go to try to get clarity on this, but we will try to get some answers for you before I conclude the hearing today. Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so continuing on, I have someone identified as Mark Fryberger or Freeburger. Fry would be my guess, but we'll, we'll see if this person is interested in testifying.
So, Mr. Reeves, I'm the Director of Public Works of the City of Seidro Wully. I was just listening.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have any comments you wanted to share? If so, I can swear you in.
No, I believe that's been adequately covered by the Director of Building Planning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, two more names. I have someone identified simply as Bux, B U X.
Sorry, that's me. I had to switch over to my phone. So this is Laura Bucko and I don't have any comment.
Oh, okay, thank you. And then this might be another bucko, but I have an iPhone, just identified as iPhone. If you're the person simply identified as iPhone, this would be your opportunity.
Yeah, that's Tim Woodman. See, I'm just listening in.
Okay, thank you. So I believe then we've now called on everyone that's in the room, I believe. Nicole, I'm getting a nod from Ms. McGowan. Yeah, okay, thumbs up. So what I'd like to do at this point is, I don't know who the best person would be, whether Ruben can do this or Ms. McGowan or Mr. Coleman, I don't care who does, but if someone can pull up the plat map, the proposed plat map, let's, on our screen, if that's possible, let's see if we can put that on the screen and then maybe hear from someone on the applicant's team or Mr. Coleman to, to try to.
I can, I can address this.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Coleman.
I just spoke with David Lee, our city engineer. And as far as where the road goes, so you can see. He's a
We'll hear him in a little bit.
So I believe the caller was from this property, Mr. Ray. And the question was about, this is, this is North Trail Road. We're planning to continue the sewer and stub it right at the end here so it can continue northwards along the, you know, wherever the North Railroad road will go. And then, of course, it'll extend as far as feasibly possible by gravity. And, you know, those sorts of details have not been worked out. You know, we're just at a preliminary plat stage. We're not at the stage of determining exactly, you know, how deep the sewer is, how far, you know, those, those engineering things have not been figured out yet.
Okay, but, but at a minimum, the idea is this plat would be served by the public sewer system. And there would be that sort of stub, stub out so that future property owners, were they to develop and further subdivide, would be able to stub into the system. Near the edge of the line, I mean.
That's being planned for, to the amount feasible. And we're sure that we can, you know, we're pretty sure that we can get it this far up to that northern extremity and that will be the underground city sewer. So properties to the north should have access to it. We just don't know the details of it.
Okay.
We're definitely planning ahead to make sure that neighboring properties can develop as well.
Did that clarify things for you, Mr. Ray?
Yes, you did. Yes, it did. Thank you very much. I guess my only other thing to add is Mr. Lee added, he, he mentioned it might be around 10 feet deep or something like that, but he wasn't totally sure. Is that, is that kind of a no ballpark assessment there?
David Lee is nodding at me, yes.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay.
And just, and Mr. Ray, just to clarify things, I think originally you had said you're a property owner to the west, but on this map, are you to the north?
Yes, I would be to the north. I apologize.
No problem at all. Mr. Coleman was accurate in circling the property that we think is yours. Is that?
That's correct.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So at this point, we are going to mute you, Mr. Ray, but thank you. Feel free to stick around if you'd like to hear the rest. Hopefully that clarified things for you. And if you can stop sharing your screen at this point. Excellence. Okay, so at this point, where are we going? Ultimately, I wanted to hear from Rabnik and Associates just briefly on stormwater in particular. Just wanted some clarification on that issue. And then my thinking would be we'll go back to Mr. Coleman and then at the end, Mr. Schutz to wrap things up. Does, does that work?
It does from, from our perspective.
Excellent. Okay, so our engineer from Rabnik and Associates, if we can unmute her.
There we go.
Great, thank you for being here. I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
And could you state your name and then clearly spell it for the audio recording?
Heike Nelson, H E I K E N E L S O N.
Great, thank you for being here. And so essentially, if, I was just hoping, I didn't have submitted, I think, I didn't see a preliminary stormwater report, or at least I didn't review one. So I was hoping you could just speak to what the concept for stormwater management for this, this site is going to be and just the very basic details, just so I have a, you know, one of the things I need to review under RCW 5817110 is stormwater. And so I just wanted to make sure I understand what, what is being proposed.
Of course, I'm happy to answer, give you a brief synopsis and you can ask any questions you like. We did submit a full drain engineer drainage report with this preliminary plat application. So I'm not sure why you wouldn't have got a copy of that. I'm more than happy to provide another copy if that would be helpful.
I don't like it. Sorry, I, if I could clarify, I think there are some reports that were provided with, as part of the SEPA analysis. They included the traffic analysis and the drainage analysis, and I don't think those were made exhibits for this hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so what I'm going to, I'll come back to you in just one second, Ms. Nelson, but from city staff. Just for purposes of the completeness of the record, you know, I'm not smart enough to be an engineer, but I at least often will look at these reports and make sure that someone smarter than me has signed off on things. But I would request that those, those additional reports specifically related to stormwater and traffic be provided as part of our record, and I'll suggest we make those exhibits queue can be additional reports, just so we have a complete record. Any issue with that, Mr. Coleman?
I'm sending them to you now.
Excellent. Okay, so that clarifies that. But in the meantime, Ms. Nelson, if you could just again, speak to the basic concept of how stormwater would be managed on site, that'd be great.
Of course. Well, we're going to do a range of a bunch of micro stormwater systems on this project. We're really going to be reaching to use as much of the LID provisions as mandated by the 2014 DOE manual to best fit this site. Unfortunately, or I mean, we have a reasonably high groundwater in areas of this site, which really prohibits us from doing a traditional drainage pond as we're used to seeing in the old school world of doing drainage, if you will. Much simpler to look at, but in today's day and age, we're tasked with much more doing a bunch of micro systems and trying to distribute that water over the entire site. So.
Sorry to interrupt, just to clarify for non-experts that might be watching. When you say LID, do you mean low impact development techniques as identified by DOE and its manual, et cetera?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem. And further, are you sort of, the idea is you infiltrate, try to infiltrate the water on site? And I'll quit interrupting you at that point. Just reminder that there are probably folks watching that are not stormwater experts. You know, less jargon would be good, even though I hear this stuff all the time. I want to ensure non-experts are, are able to follow along, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate the help. Sometimes I get a little techie.
No problem.
What we're going to do is what we hope to do, or what we will do with this project is we'll be collecting runoff from the impervious surfaces, hard surfaces such as roadways, sidewalks, things like that. And we'll be routing them to a infiltration system that will be fit underneath the sidewalks. The waters will be treated first in a vault, pretreated, and then they will be distributed under probably a narrow, maybe foot, one foot depth, depending on the depth of groundwater, to sit and be contained in a reservoir underneath the sidewalks while they can percolate as much as possible into the underlying soils. There will be an overflow, a very, very easy overflow, basically a standpipe that will allow very large rare storm events that will exceed the system's capacity to infiltrate and let those waters up and overflow out into Brickyard Creek as allowed by DOE. They do allow us to match the existing runoff rates. So that we will provide all the mitigation as required by the Department of Ecology in the various different ways.
And I guess clarification on that point, so so I understand the concept for one, basically, you know, stormwater, rainfalls, the, the impervious surfaces that potentially have pollution, i.e. the roads, driveways. That water is going to be rooted and collected. It's going to go into a vault underneath the sidewalks within the plat to be treated. And then the water will be treated as it is percolating, percolating, percolating. Ideally, that it infiltrates into the groundwater table as clean water. So that we maintain what I think is called hydrologic, the hydrologic flow in the area, if you will. And then in a worst comes, comes the worst scenario, like perhaps happened a few weeks ago, I don't know, I was not in the area, I was in California, but I saw the news and the amount of rain that happened both north of Seattle and south of Olympia. Quite shocking, that amount of rain. So potentially a hundred year flood event. Which as we now know is not an event that occurs once every hundred years. It's a an event that has that probability of occurring, but now they seem to occur all the time. But the, the idea is as a default backup system, that water would be able to be collected and go into Brickyard Creek as opposed to just flowing and impacting adjacent properties. Is that the basic?
It basically has an emergency overflow. It takes a little bit more than the emergency overflow, but again, very rare storm events, like you said, that exceed all what we expect to see on a mass majority of the basis.
Excellent. And have you, or has the applicant gone through like hydraulic project approval process? Is that necessary in terms of work within Brickyard Creek? Are there any other permits that might be necessary to do the work that will allow that pipe, that outflow pipe to tie into Brickyard?
Discharge. Well, first of all, the discharges will make upstream outside of the actual critical area, so it'll be in the buffer. But secondly, we will be preparing a JARPA for this project. We also have a stream crossing with the road, which is going to put a very large diameter pipe through. We've coordinated with fisheries already on that. So as a much bigger portion of the project, we'll be dealing with the JARPA for that, but we will also include in that JARPA the small amount of discharge of stormwater from the onsite retention, if you will, systems.
Okay, so you prepared or will be preparing the Joint Aquatic Resources Permit Application, JARPA?
Yes.
And then that gives notice or involves all the agencies, you know, federal and state that would have authority over any aspects of the project that require further review by said agencies. That's how that happens. I am not in charge of that. I don't need to be in charge of it. I just wanted to make sure, you know, I understood that that potentially was happening and it sounds like it is, so that'll make sense, right?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Additionally, house sites will deal with the road water and the public right of way water separately as the city of Seidro Wully desires. We do not combine them into one system like we see in a lot of places. So we will deal with those under the sidewalk. House runoff waters will be dealt with if they're adjoining Brickyard Creek. They will be designed with dispersion trenches for the roof runoff. Roof runoff is classified as clean water, not the non-pollution generating surface by the DOE, Department of Ecology. So that can be freely released and dispersed over the buffer area, which gives it a lot of contact time to hopefully percolate into the ground as well. Has more than 50 feet to get to the critical area and it's actually really the most desired way to deal with the roof runoff. Areas that do not adjoin Brickyard Creek directly will have backyard infiltration systems that they will be able to be stubbed, the roof drains stubbed too. We will promote infiltration in those as well. And they will be released by a different control structure. Again, just for the up and overflow, a mass majority of the waters will be infiltrated on site.
Great. As, so that, those are the various micro systems. And then the one big macro system is the one that collects the quote dirty water and make sure it's treated before it either is, you know, infiltrated or ends up in Brickyard Creek, right?
Yes, we will. All water will be treated as required prior to discharging from the site.
Great. Thank you then for, for clarifying. Great. Thank you then for clarifying that. That's helpful. Only other question there. You know, there are so many manuals now, and some jurisdictions have created their own, but which manual is this being sort of created under or reviewed against? Is it DOE 2012 updates in 14 and 19 or 14? Where are we at at this point?
Yes, City of Seidro Wully, to my knowledge, has adopted the 2012 amended 2014 DOE manual. However, the way that this project is being designed, it would meet the 2019 criteria as well, but I have not gone through the nuts and bolts and sticks of that, just a thousand percent make sure. And as an engineer, I'm always a bit cautious of telling you it would completely fulfill, but to my knowledge, there's not, matter of fact, the 2019 further promotes what we're proposing to do with this. So, you know, I don't see any worries, even if it were to change moving forward on this project.
Great. Thank you so much. Did you have any other thoughts or comments you wanted to share about the proposal or the engineering aspects before we move on?
You know, just briefly, we've been working on this project for a couple of years with the Bushko family, and, you know, they really have a very exciting view of what they'd like to create here in the City of Seidro Wully. And I too, like everyone else, want to compliment the City of Seidro Wully and their staff. Working through this has been a difficult process, and it's taken some time, but I think it's going to be the unique project that creates a very nice neighborhood for people to enjoy and live in, as well as a really important thoroughfare for the City of Seidro Wully. So I think this is one of those fun projects we're all going to be able to be very excited about in the future.
Great, thank you. Before I let you go, I just wanted to see if Mr. Schutz had any questions. He was hoping you clarified before we move on. Mr. Schutz, anything from Ms. Nelson before we release her?
I do not. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your time.
My pleasure.
Excellent. Okay, so at this point, we'll go to Mr. Coleman and see if city staff has any final thoughts, comments, et cetera, based on everything it's heard today, and in particular, any additional thoughts on the proposed condition three and the issue related to the trail, et cetera. You aren't required to make up your mind one way or the other. You can take that on to me. I have no problem making decisions that annoy people, as Mr. Schutz and Mr. Coleman know, so. But I want to give you, Mr. Coleman, the floor for any final thoughts on behalf of the city.
All right, so again, just support of the project, we put the, we put condition three in there for a reason. We have good reason for doing so. We do need maintenance access into that area. You know, sort of. The anecdotally, I've spoken with our police department to see if we have any crime problems on any existing trails in the city. We don't have a whole lot of existing trails through neighborhoods, but the, the police department said that we don't have any problems like that. We really feel like it's conjecture that people are saying that there will be crime on their trails. That seems, I don't know, this just seems more like opinion than, than fact, so. We just, we feel that the trail is very important to, for the city to have. And that's, if that's the only point of contention between us and the applicant, I think we're doing pretty good.
Sure, and I guess thinking it through, and and I think Mr. Hayden's testimony was helpful on that aspect. You know, there's this idea that if you don't record an easement of some kind now, right? Then if 20 years from now, you know, City of Seidro Wully wins a bunch of money, you know, for being such a great place from the federal government, and and now you can finally build out this trail system. If that easement at least isn't recorded, you potentially run into a challenge of building a trail down the road. So I guess my sense of Mr. Hayden's thoughts were, you know, at a minimum, even if nobody is building a trail yet, why don't we have an easement in place that benefits the city, you know, which would A, take care of your access concerns in terms of, you know, being able to park vehicles and get over, you know, to deal with the stormwater system aspects of Brickyard Creek, but then potentially at some unnamed date down the road, if there was funding and and an actual trail system could go in under, you know, the tip or whatever transportation improvement plan, that would be possible. So any thoughts on that concept from the city, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, you know, from a planning perspective, it sounds like a great idea to accommodate future, future trails and 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 access into that area. And it also isn't requiring any public access to it now currently, so that.
Right. And so I, I guess in my mind, if that were to be the way I went, right? The understanding is, you know, no trail is, no actual public trail is currently being built, but there would be an easement so that in the long term, if a public trail ended up being something that the community wanted to move forward with, you know, then it would become the city's maintenance responsibility, you know, and it would no longer fall on the homeowners to maintain it. But at least by making it, giving those rights now, whether they are ever used or not, at least you preserve the possibility down the road of of a trail system. Does that track in your mind?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. I'll let Mr. Schutz speak to this as well, but any other thoughts or comments you wanted to share, Mr. Coleman, before I go to Mr. Schutz here at the end?
I think that's it. Thanks.
Great, and I did receive those two additional exhibits, those two reports, and I'm just going to make those exhibit queue, but essentially those were the stormwater documents and the traffic analysis. So we'll add those to the record. And okay, with that, Mr. Schutz, floor is yours. Go right ahead, sir.
Sure, and I won't beat this, I won't beat this too long. The applicant is, the applicant's incredibly civic-minded, and if there was a trail on both sides of this, and they were trying to connect it to a trail system, there'd be no question that they would be open to that. I think Mr. Hayden's comments were were well organized and well thought out, and it makes a lot of sense. But this is not the Burke-Gilman Trail. What this would do essentially is just allow people back behind fences in a small neighborhood. It'd be a limited little spot back, you know, by the plantings where, where people wouldn't be able to see what's happening, not connected to any other trails. If the hearing examiners, you know, considering this, you know, blocking this out for future trail use or something of the like, we'd ask that it be, allow that, allow that the applicant HOA to gate it. Because there's, you know, until such time as it would become part of a trail system, that way there would be some assurance with regard to our concerns, and it wouldn't be a problem with regard to city at city maintenance, so.
I'm going to tip my hand, Mr. Schutz, to the extent that in my mind, it made a lot, it makes a lot of sense to A, ensure that there is, you know, access easements, right? So that if, like I said, 20 years from now, right, it's not the Burke-Gilman Trail now, but there's the Burke-Gilman Trail, as I think you know, took what, 50 years of, you know, of development and thinking and acquiring and blah, 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 you know, and it was in little areas at at various times. But so in my mind, as, you know, it would make a whole lot of sense to ensure that that potential is there and and preserved. But in the meantime, until this thing became a public trail maintained as a public trail by the city, it would be, you know, just, you know, a gated, only accessible by the HOA and the city. That that's kind of what I'm thinking. I would suggest, I'll give you a crack at trying to craft something to that effect if you prefer, Mr. Schutz, or I can just do it, but I suspect you'd probably prefer taking a crack at it before I just write it. So what's your thinking on that, Mr. Schutz?
You know, I talked about this with the client, some understanding that this was a potential or maybe even likely outcome, and talked to the contractor as to what that would look like, and was assured that we could, we could gate it in a way that was essentially deterred public use, that was cost-effective. And, you know, if the hearing examiner wanted to write in something that that would essentially dissolve or go away, come if the trail was to be linked to other portions, that would work for us.
Sure, okay. Sorry, are you saying, suggesting I just go ahead if I approve this and write condition three in any way I Sophie?
Well, yeah, I guess, I mean, if you, the thought would be that access would be limited to HOA and the city. This is just our perspective, limited to HOA and the city, both would have access. HOA would be in charge of constructing the the apparatus.
Well, and I guess my only other thought is, if, what, what preserves the the city's right, you know, to, I mean, is there a recorded easement ultimately? That's to me preferable to the extent that, you know, even if the HOA is maintaining it and the HOA installs it, you know, by recording an easement, you know, just solely related to access for the city, right? I would want it phrased something to the effect of, you know, an easement shall be recorded, allowing for access by the city, the city staff to the eight-foot trail. And moreover, should, you know, the trail become part of a larger public trail system, you know, then that eight feet or whatever would would, you know, I'm trying to think through the.
No, I understand, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, without speaking to my clients, I can't say with specificity. My my gut is that an easement would be preferable to dedication, and that there be parameters on the city's use limited to maintenance.
Yeah, which is why I was going to give you a shot at.
Yeah, that's, so I will take you up on that offer. I will take you up on that offer. Thank you, and draft something for your consideration and.
How about this? Today's Wednesday. I mean, if you put something together and maybe have Mr. Coleman or, you know, someone on his staff, if it's not him that has expertise, maybe Public Works should look at it too, if they're the ones using the trail, but, you know, if if there's sort of an agreed proposed condition, let's just assume if I approve this thing, I do want, you know, the the access easement to exist were I to approve this. So I'm not going to eliminate condition three, so I'm giving you an alternative, which is see if you can work with city staff and come up with sort of an agreed condition that captures this idea. And would Monday be a reasonable amount of time to try to put that together? If you can do it quicker, fine, but I'm just thinking you need to talk to your clients, talk to Mr. Coleman, let Mr. Coleman weigh in, et cetera. But my thought was Monday, but go ahead, Mr. Schutz.
I think Monday is reasonable.
Yeah, Mr. Coleman, does that make sense to you? And Monday's a holiday, sorry. Martin Luther King Day, so Tuesday would be, it'd be the 18th. Mr. Coleman, that.
Yeah, so I'll have to coordinate with our Public Works Department and whomever, whatever else, city staff to to review it, and we'll need a little time to to look at it. So what's what's a reasonable timeframe for us to then get it back to you to help you finish your determination?
Well, I mean, I guess my thinking was Mr. Schutz will talk to his clients now or at worst tomorrow. I know he's quick on the draw and competent and can put something together pretty quickly. And so, you know, is the thinking, he gets it to you by Monday. In my mind, I was thinking it comes back to me by Tuesday, but if you think that's not enough time, you know, I don't want to rush something as important as this, to the extent that the whole point of crafting this condition is a thought, you know, long-term in terms of both this property and any potential future trail system. So I'm not trying to rush anyone. I also don't want to needlessly hold up the project. But what's, Mr. Schutz, if you got Mr. Coleman something by, could you do it by Friday or would you prefer Tuesday on your end?
I can do it by Friday.
Okay, so if Mr. Schutz gets you something by Friday, Mr. Coleman, in your mind, what would be a reasonable turnaround? Then go ahead and, you know, get it over to me after you've thought about it.
Well, honestly, I don't think we'll be able to get the people we need to look at it on Friday, so you may as well take till Tuesday if that works better. And then I'll need it to route it to at least a couple of people for to review. So I would love to get it out in, if we get a chance to get it Tuesday, Wednesday, get it to them on Thursday. Is that, I don't want to draw this out. I just can't account for other people's schedules, so I can't guarantee when other people are going to have a chance to look at it, and if they need to go any back and forth.
Sure, I think it's reasonable to say the 20th. Mr. Schutz, your your thoughts? I mean, ultimately, that gives both sides time to kind of try to hammer something out and then get it to me approximately one week from from today, when accounting for Martin Luther King Day.
That'll work for us.
Excellent. So, Mr. Coleman, make every effort to work with Mr. Schutz, and I don't care who gets it back to me, but have someone, you know, produce what we'll call proposed condition three and get it back by next, the next Thursday, by the end of the day, and then the record can close at that time.
Okay, and, you know, just so everybody knows, my intention is not to drag it out till Thursday. That is the last thing I want to do. I want to move this as far, as fast as possible, but just, I can't account for other people's timeframes.
Absolutely. I think we're all, we all understand that, I think, so. Anything further from you there, Mr. Coleman?
No, thank you.
And, Mr. Schutz, I just thought of something I had meant to ask earlier. I had, way earlier in the hearing, I had talked about that letter that came in from the Seidro Wully School District related to the bus depot. Have you run into a situation, you know, comparable in the past? You know, I've I've had proposals where, you know, you you just put something on the plat documents, or the other option is it's, you know, referenced in the HOA materials, but essentially you're trying to put new homeowners, right, on notice that there's this strange pre-existing use that has some arguably potentially detrimental impacts, but in this instance, buses have to go somewhere, buses are important for for our school system. So if folks move into this this property, you know, the, essentially the school district's trying to ensure that they were, folks were put on notice so that, you know, they don't feel that they have grounds to complain later. But your thoughts, Mr. Schutz, on a solution in advance to that potential issue?
Yeah, thank you. I have not, I don't have personal experience with that on a plat specifically or even outside of just the general disclosure requirements in the sale of property. I imagine that some of my partners have, and I'd love the opportunity to get their thoughts on it, and I could provide, provide that at the same time we provide that, the other document to you.
You read my mind. So I, in my mind, I think it would be useful to try to address this one way or the other, and I'd be willing to, you know, let you work through this, talk to your your other experts and say, hey, you know, Hearing Examiner Reeves had this crazy idea. Has anyone run into this before? What's a good solution? And whatever they come up with, I doubt Mr. Coleman would have any issue on behalf of the city. You know, whether the solution is put something right on the face of the plat or include something in the HOA in terms of notice, you know, I think it's beneficial, so. So, um, I'd be curious to see what you come up with, but you have that opportunity. Uh, I would request that you loop the city in on whatever you come up with and I'll look at it. And, uh, if it's sensible to me, I will probably add that as a, a condition.
Okay. Yep.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. Coleman, no issue on that as well?
No, I appreciate, you know, it sounds like we'll be probably communicating, you know, our departments and maybe our city attorneys are already going to be communicating with Ruben on the, the trail condition issue. And, uh, so we'll be working together.
Two birds, one stone.
What, what time specifically did you want to have the record closed on the 20th?
I mean, up to you. I, I'll, I'll treat the record as closed on the 20th, but I, I'm not gonna, get it to me after five, I'm not gonna then all of a sudden decide the record really closed on the 21st. So I'll give you up until midnight on, on the date, but I'll treat the record as closed, uh, whenever it comes in.
Just want to be working with clear expectations. Thank you.
Yep. We all appreciate that. Uh, so Mr. Schutz, that, thank you for, for, uh, dealing with that particular issue. I now want to give you an opportunity to, any final thoughts, comments, argument you wanted to make? This would be your opportunity before we call tonight.
No, I think, I think we have it covered. I appreciate everyone's time.
Oh my God. I just gave an attorney an opportunity to sneak that way. Clearly, Mr. Schutz has places to be. We all do. It's past five. This clearly a, a big project, somewhat complicated. But I do appreciate everyone taking the time to be here, to participate in the process, to answer my questions, Mr. Schutz's questions. Uh, I believe I have a clear understanding of what is being proposed. So what I will do is, uh, you know, review everything that, that's come in already. Well, further review it, uh, but I am going to look at those stormwater report and, and traffic report that I have not yet reviewed. In addition, we have a couple of other things I'm waiting on to look at. But I will take all of this under consideration once the record closes and produce a decision on the proposal within 10 days, 10 business days of the record closing. And that'll wrap things up. So we'll treat the record as closed. The intent is May 20th, or May, where did I come up with that? January 20th. Clearly I've had a long day too. January 20th is, is the intent for when the record will be closed. And, uh, again, I'll take everything under consideration and timely produce a decision within 10 working days after the record closes. Okay, everybody?
Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you so much. And with that, we'll go ahead and end today's meeting. And I just want to say, I hope everyone had a nice holiday season and I, uh, hope everyone is safe and healthy. I, you know, this crazy world we're living in, I, I got notified yesterday that someone I have close contacts with got diagnosed positive. So I was supposed to actually hold an in-person hearing in Pierce County this morning. And I said, no, not coming in. We're going to use Zoom like everywhere else. I feel fine, but I, I just wanted to, uh, tell everyone, I wish everyone safety and good health, regardless of what happens on this particular proposal. So thank you, everyone. With that, we'll end tonight's meeting. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.